Not yet.
The countdown continues.
There it is.
All right, welcome everyone. I will call to order the August 20th meeting of the Long Lake City Council meeting. It's now 6:30 PM and my name's John Dyvick. I'm sitting in for Charlie Minor who is on vacation at the moment. And also we are missing Gina Joyce who is sick, but we have Deirdre Qualley, Mike Feldman, and myself. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then we'll move on to item number three, which is Mayor's comments. Thank you Jeanette for giving me some bullet points here. Well, first I'll say that we just had an EDA meeting where we reviewed two conceptual proposals for the city-owned former BP site at 1905 Wayzata Boulevard. And the direction there was to have the applicants go back and make some changes and also perhaps work together because they were two different proposals, but maybe there could be some joint agreement between the two. So we're going to be reviewing that again in September. I'd also like to highlight that we had Corn Days sponsored by the Church of St. George. So thank you to them. That was a good time. We had good weather for that as well as the Corn Days Parade, which was sponsored by the Long Lake Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for them. It was, I thought it was a very great day for a parade and for the festival at Corn Days. Also, thank you to Long Lake Fire and Wayzata PD for their help and their participation. Tuesday, August 13th was Minnesota Primary Election Day. A thank you to the election judges who volunteered to serve and work all day and to the voters who came out to vote and participate. Candidate filing for the city's mayor position and two council member seats ended on primary election day also. Mayor Minor is running unopposed for reelection to another two-year term. And then council member Mike Feldman is running for reelection to his seat. And resident Todd Newcomer is running for election to the seat currently held by council member Joyce. Council member Joyce decided not to run for another term, so we thank her for her service to the city these past four years. And then I'll make another comment at our consent agenda about retiring firefighter Tom Aldrich. But I think that's all I had for comments. Did I miss anything, Jeanette?
That sounds wonderful.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the item number four is to approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 3-0. Then is the consent agenda. And here's where I just wanted to point out, one of the items on the consent agenda was the retirement of firefighter Tom Aldrich. And he didn't want us to make a big deal of it, but I did want to just read quickly some comments that Mayor Minor sent to him. Let me see if I can find it here. So this is what Mayor Minor wrote to Tom. And again, Tom didn't want us to make a big deal, but I'd like to say this, on behalf, which I happen to agree with, "On behalf of the city of Long Lake and all the cities that you have dutifully served, I would like to take a moment to thank you for your 35 amazing years of service with the Long Lake Fire Department." And then he just, he wrote some personal things that I'll leave out, but then again, he says, "Again, the entire community thanks you, Tom, for putting your life on the line for them for 35 amazing years. You'll be missed. And I hope you continue to stay active as a Long Lake Fire Department retiree." So thank you to Tom for all those years of service. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You know, can I just ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Nothing, just, I was just curious. We are accepting a donation of two storage containers. They're pretty expensive storage containers and thank the Long Lake, it was the Relief Association if I'm correct. I've forgotten, it's not listed on here. So what are those?
They almost look like the ones that you see on rail cars.
Are they 20-foot containers?
They're two 20-foot containers sitting next to each other, yes.
And what are they using for?
Some excess storage. So they have, you know, over time, they've acquired some of those chairs and tables for the pancake breakfast.
Yeah.
So the Relief Association purchased that because they're waterproof and safe and secure, so.
So they can, so are they top load or?
There are, nope, they're just open the door and you walk them in.
These are huge, these are.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Okay.
You can drive a car in these.
It's like a storage container on a boat kind of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, like, yeah, shipping container. It's almost the same thing.
Yeah, because they were like $3,000 apiece?
Yeah, so they come use, one-time use. They're all been, you know, refurbished, so.
They're 20 feet long and they're probably nine feet high by nine feet wide or something like that?
Give or take eight and a half, but yeah.
Okay. And the only other thing is on the, I was just curious, the vendor check register log, we have some money for US flags. Are those for the, are we, $1,300 times 20?
I believe that's replacing all the flags for the downtown for seasonal, like our Memorial Day and, you know, for the July type stuff. They were getting pretty worn and pretty.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's all I, the only questions I had.
Anything?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 3-0. Next is open correspondence. Open correspondence is an item on the agenda during which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council and comments shall be limited to five minutes or less.
Erica was here representing the ORNO houses. She just wanted to make sure her application for the premises permit was approved this evening and that is all done. So don't feel like you have to wait.
So what was, so tell me what that was for again.
That was the, they'd be operating charitable gambling out of Buck's Pub when they opened.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, so this was their gambling application.
Yeah, I heard that. Okay.
Yep.
All right. I wasn't even on the agenda, so I didn't.
Well, it was on the.
It was, oh, it's on the consent.
It was on the consent agenda, yes.
All right.
Snuck in.
Do you have any open correspondence by email?
I do not, thank you.
All right, then we will move on to item number seven, which is updates regarding fire department matters.
And let me see, was it on August 7th or so, we had a fire advisory board meeting. We went over the 25, 2025 fire department budget. I believe of all, everybody's under the same understanding, so we'll be putting that forward through our preliminary budget. ORNO will be doing the same along with Medina. So that's something that was a positive step forward. I don't know if there's been any meetings since then, if you have attended any?
Nope, no. And regarding that, I thought it was good, we had some good discussion, the fire advisory board. In fact, we made an adjustment that ORNO requested. I'm trying to remember what it was. Was it on the percent, the duty crew percentage calculation? That was maybe lowered a little bit from what we had.
I think we lowered that, well, since the other couple drafts, we lowered that percentage down. And then we also reduced, split the difference on legal fees.
On what?
Right, that's right. Yeah, there were some legal fees that, oh, for budgeting for next year.
Oh, okay.
We reduced the budget for that line item at ORNO's request. And so I think we left that meeting, everybody being in agreement that we had a budget that was workable. And so I was hoping that the three cities would bring it to their councils to hopefully vote and approve.
So we, when will it come before our council?
You'll see at the, in September at the preliminary. So we're having, I believe, trying to have one more, possibly if we wanted one more meeting. If there are other council members or of the cities wanted to discuss it further, we could make an emergency fire advisory board, fire advisory board meeting to adjust the budget. But I think, like I said, we walked away with assuming that the members were going to be able to support the budget with the rest of their council.
And our council will be having a budget work session at your first meeting in September, which I want to say is September, is it 2nd or?
For 2nd, 2nd, 3rd.
Yeah, very early in the month.
Oh, it says it right here, preliminary budget.
Oh.
There we go, yes. Wow, I actually put it on there. Tuesday, September 3rd, yes.
So you reduced the amount for duty crews, I think, because, do you think that's going to be a hindrance for how much?
No, I think, I think, I don't remember if we reduced that amount at this fire advisory board meeting or not.
I think it was a previous one. It went from 60% down to 55% because we're seeing where our call volume, our participation amounts, we felt that was more on line with the year and how we, you know, so we started this back almost a year and a half. Now we'll be going into our, almost our second year, but then we're seeing the participants just kind of come up and just kind of plateau. So no reason to over budget if we feel like we're on a certain plane.
Yeah, so Chief Highland showed, and Scott showed the numbers for July, was it, and for duty crew participation. And it was kind of around that 50% level. And so, and the budget was maybe trying to be a little bit more optimistic and I think we were at 55%. And anyway, we, and it maybe had been higher and we came down to that. So, you know, I think we all felt like that was a reasonable.
What about capital, nothing for capital?
Yeah, we did present the capital improvement plan as well. And we put, I asked Scott to put the rescue utility vehicle on there because we're not receiving that till 2025. And, you know, ORNO's already made, indicated that they're not going to participate in any purchasing of capital equipment till the end of the contract, although they did say they would review it on a case-by-case basis. And, but actually then what came up was, one of the ORNO council members asked if, if we would commit to buying it outright at the end of the contract, then maybe that would be something that would be more palatable to them. And I understood that because if they don't know who's, you know, we get first dibs on buying any equipment at the end of the contract. And if they don't know what, how that's going to go at the end of the contract, whether we're going to want it or not, they have to start planning early for their needs, right? And if, and if they knew that either we definitely wanted it or we definitely didn't want it, then that might help them with that decision. So I, in fact, thanks for reminding me that. I was going to bring that up to our council here, that if we, you know, would be willing to say, yeah, we're going to buy that at the end of the contract. And in my opinion, I said this at the meeting, that I believe we will buy that, but I'm just one of five because I think it is something that we will need going forward. So I wouldn't have a problem saying, yeah, we'll buy it at the end of the contract, but let's buy it under the terms of the contract now. And so then we would split the percentage, you know, percentage-wise, we would split the cost of that. And they seem to be willing to do that if we were willing to sort of make that commitment of buying it outright at the end. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Oh, but it's not on the budget right now.
It is. It's on the capital improvement plan budget, you know, the 10-year plan. It's on there for 2025.
Oh, okay.
For $240,000, because that's when we're going to receive it. And, and some argued, you guys already decided, you know, you're going to buy this anyway and all that. I said, yeah, that's true. If ORNO isn't going to participate, Long Lake is planning to buy this outright. But this is a capital improvement plan. And that plan is what are the needs for this fire department? Not who's going to pay for what, who's going to buy, you know?
Yeah.
It's what this fire department needs. And this has been a need that has been kicked, can, been kicked down the road many times. It was, in fact, I brought our capital improvement plan from 2015 and 2016. And even on there, it was like the next, the next highest priority, you know. Well, maybe I didn't go back that far. Maybe it was like 2018 or something like that. But it was showing that this is something we needed in 2020 and then 2021. So it's been pushed several years out. And, and I didn't want to ignore that, that just because we don't know if ORNO is going to pay for their share of it or not. It's still a need and it should be on the plan.
So, but it's not on, it wasn't on anything that was approved by the fire advisory board that will go back to?
Well, the fire advisory board doesn't, doesn't approve, doesn't approve anything. The fire advisory board is to review and to revise the budgets, operational and capital. And hopefully with the support of the fire advisory board from all the cities, the operational budget gets passed because, you know, the rest of the council says, hey, what do you think? Is this, is this okay? And they say, yeah, we've all talked about it and, and we think this is a good, you know, this is a reasonable thing. I expected that the capital improvement budget would, you know, just not be addressed by ORNO because they've indicated that before. And then we'll have to go alone like we had expected to do. But in this conversation that we had in the fire advisory board, there was an indication that if we were willing to say we were going to buy it at the end of the contract with certainty, then they would, you know, buy it together with us now under the terms of the contract.
And I think we talked about, we've talked about this before. So after the contract ends, we think we need this based on kind of gaps in, having it at a local station in Long Lake and there's gaps in what other partners might have.
Well, so we don't know what other partners will have because we don't yet know what partners we will have. And so, but I think it's a pretty key piece of equipment to have. I mean, Mike Highland indicated that you want this kind of truck. And it's, it's, you know, in my opinion, that was, that was enough for me to say, chief, is this a need for you? And for Scott too, that I asked them, is this something we're going to want? And I felt like the indication was yes.
And it seems like we're, the utility we're using now is kind of past its prime?
Well, I mean, it's old, it's old.
Yeah, it's past its first out essentially for what we need and use it for. The new one's going to be multiple, it's going to be more of a Swiss Army knife than just kind of what the current one is, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, I think we talked about this last, the same thing, last meeting.
Okay. I apologize if I'm repeating myself.
Everything you say is refreshing me.
Yeah, yeah. So.
But I was just wondering what the mechanism is. So basically, will any, if, once that's worked out, if we do agree and convey that, perhaps when they're, during their budget meetings, they might approve it?
Well, the two fire advisory board members indicated that they would be favorable towards that if we made that commitment. But they're just two of five as well. And I said to them, I'm just one of five when I was making that statement. So, that I thought that we would commit to that. Yeah, so I don't know, Scott, if we should have some sort of?
We'll talk, it'll be part of our preliminary budget discussion because that's where I think I'll want to get.
When is that?
The 3rd.
I mean, could we have a, an item on the agenda to say?
That's where I would say that.
Yeah, just say if ORNO and Medina are willing to, you know, buy this vehicle under the terms of the contract, Long Lake will commit to buying it at the end of the contract or something like that.
As long as our council supports that.
And then, well, and then have a vote on it, you know, see if.
Could Mike Highland be at that? Was Mike Highland planning on being at that September 3rd meeting? Just to kind of, if he has any insight, like?
Fire experts should be making decisions on equipment and not council.
Well, that's why I said, no. But that's why I said, I, first thing I did was look to Mike Highland. I said, is this something we're going to need after this contract?
Yeah, I had talked to Mike offline too. I think this is a pretty important need. And I think the last time we talked, you know, this is above and beyond the contract, but it's a reasonable request given the situation we're in, so.
And but we have some hypothetical proposed or potential partners, not proposed, but hypothetical potential partners, and what's their inventory and what does that look like?
Sure, yeah.
But it may be that we need something more local.
Yeah. This, yeah, this goes out to medicals, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's used for a lot of different.
Yeah, it's one of your first out.
Okay, so we'll have that on the, on the agenda when we're doing our budgeting.
Yep.
Anything else, Scott?
Not that I can think of.
Deirdre, do you have anything fire-related?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
All right, I want to read something that I wrote today. So that's fire-related. "I don't normally respond to social media or other forums that the ORNO mayor uses to continually spread misinformation. He, I think he figures that if he repeats a lie long enough, people start to believe it. But I did listen to his coffee with the mayor last week and it needs a response, in my opinion. At that meeting, a question was asked about why the ORNO 2024 fire budget went up from the needs assessment in 2023 to now by $800,000. This resident quoted it as going from 1.6 million to 2.4 million. And that seems like a reasonable question. One that could be answered by, equipment cost was higher than anticipated or additional equipment was needed or more staff was needed, et cetera. Instead, the mayor angrily responded to this resident, this ORNO resident, calling her an activist. He completely deflected from answering the question to repeating his campaign talking points about all of the great things he has done and all of the departments of ORNO that are fully funded without raising the tax rate. He likes to use that term tax rate because if someone isn't listening closely, it sounds like he hasn't raised their taxes. In fact, he and the ORNO council have raised taxes significantly over the past several years. I believe last year was, was about 19%. But ORNO has also seen property values increasing significantly over these years so that he can hide these tax increases in the fact that the tax rate relative to the property values has remained the same. So yes, they have maintained a level tax rate, but they have seen significant tax increases. So back to the mayor's comments last week, he continued to deflect from the resident's question by then attacking the Long Lake City Council. And this is why I'm responding, because of statements like this. Here's one excerpt, and this is quote, "As we're going, we have found out a lot of stuff from Long Lake on the failures of the city council to adequately protect the citizens of ORNO by having the right equipment, by having all of the right stuff that they have to wear, all that kind of stuff. They have failed in that. In fact, we have known that we've had bad response times in Navarre for a long time now, and they have still failed when they had, when they had that area to adequately protect our residents," end quote. So let me respond to that first part first. Two years ago, I gave a presentation of ORNO claims versus truth regarding the Long Lake Fire Department. Their, their claims are still being made and they're still, they still don't reflect the truth. The main one being, we pay 85% and have no say. As I stated in my presentation then, yes, they pay 85% because they, they have 85% of the service. And when we started this contract, it was 70%. But the service was so good that over the past 20 years, ORNO asked Long Lake Fire to take over the areas that were served by Mound Fire, Maple Plain Fire, and then Wayzata Fire. And that's how it's grown to be 85%. So they'll say 85%, and I'll say, yes, I agree. And then it would be immediately followed by, but we have no control. And I say, wrong. As I stated two years ago, ORNO has more control over operational budget and capital budget than Long Lake has. And I showed a slide that's, that said, ORNO has always had complete veto power and greater budgeting power than Long Lake. The contract states approval of capital budget requires two cities and 60% of the funding share. And then the contract says, once this level of approval has obtained, is obtained, all contract cities are obligated to fund their share of the expenditures. And this is another thing that the mayor brought up last week. He, he made it like, I think he said something like, you know, Long Lake thinks that once we approve a capital budget, then then they can just go buy equipment without approval. And that that's like a Long Lake thing. And, and I'd say, no, that's a contract thing that you signed. Because it says, once this level of approval is obtained, all contract cities are obligated to fund their share of the expenditures. So that's straight out of the contract.
Just to clarify, the two cities together to the contract don't equal 60%?
Right, that's what I was going to say next. So, so Long Lake, and this is on that slide too, Long Lake and Medina, neither individually nor together can force a budget on ORNO because they pay less than 60%. So that gives ORNO complete veto power. Orno, further, ORNO and Medina could force a budget on Long Lake, even if Long Lake says no, because they would have 60% and two cities. So that's on the capital budget. And then on the operating budget, it said, the contract states, operating budget must be approved by all cities, meaning again, ORNO has veto power over the operating budget. And then in addition, and as we just talked about, a fire advisory board is made up of representatives from all three cities, Medina, ORNO, and Long Lake, in our agreement, and share equally in review and revising the budgets before they go in front of the councils for approval. So we have established that ORNO controls the budgets, especially the capital budget. They control whether the capital budget goes up or down or goes away completely. So how does this relate to the first part of this, his quote about our failure to adequately equip our fire department? I showed a slide on this point. Yes, it's true, we've been historically underfunded on capital equipment. But as I said in my slide, but ORNO made it so. We repeatedly asked ORNO to approve more funding for capital and were told they can't afford it. They said instead, Long Lake Fire had to spend less. These emails are a matter of record. And on my slide, I showed the last, you know, well, 21 years of the contract. And what the capital budget started at was at $100,000 and then it stayed at $100,000 for 10 years, $100,000 a year. And then finally, they agreed to a 3% increase. So it went up to 103,000. And that was supposed to be a 3% increase per year. But I think it was that time, around that time when ORNO sent us that email saying that, that they weren't going to increase it more each year and they were just going to stay at 103,000 or their share of 103,000. And that's where it's been ever since. So it's, it's been a challenge, but, you know, we've, we've made it work as best we can. So I wrote on, on the slide regarding this matter was that Long Lake Fire CIP is underfunded and ORNO has control of the CIP budgets. Early on, the chief requested an increase to the CIP budget to meet the needs of the rising cost of equipment. ORNO instructed him to make cuts in spending instead. And then, as I already said, a 3% increase was finally granted by ORNO around 2013. By the way, this contract started in 2002. And in 2013, they finally agreed to a 3% as, and, and that was supposed to be an increase each year, as was showing in our chief's CIP, 15-year CIP in 2013. But instead, ORNO made it a one-time increase. So now, 10 years later, we're still at 103,000 per year. And again, the three cities pay in their percentage share to make up that capital amount. So then to address the second half of the mayor's statement that I read a minute ago, which was, and again, quote, "In fact, we have known that we've had bad response times in Navarre for a long time now, and they have still failed when they had that area to adequately protect our residents." And my comment there is, there were never any complaints about performance before. In fact, they used to specifically say, it's not about performance. And I had a slide there for my presentation two years ago where ORNO has said that it's not an issue of performance or service, but it's rather a financial issue. And here's a quote from Richard Crosby, ORNO council member, June 13th, 2022. "This is a business decision. It's, there's been a lot of rhetoric, it's about performance. It has nothing to do with performance. It's a dollars and cents thing." So, but, and then more recently, so, so then it wasn't about performance. There was no complaints about performance. It was just about what their perception of the cost was and who controls the cost. But more recently, now the mayor, ORNO mayor likes to point to Navarre as an area that Long Lake Fire Department has failed. And this argument of his comes from some manufactured response times that ORNO, that the ORNO fire chief included in the needs assessment in 2023. In that needs assessment, there were some Station 2 response times that were not accurate or did not reflect correctly how the calls were responded to. For example, some of the Station 2 response times in the needs assessment analysis were actually backup calls to the Station 1 area. They were not in the Station 2 primary call area. In these cases, Station 1 had already responded to the call when Station 2 arrived as backup. These scenarios should not have been part of the Station 2 response time study, but they were to make it look like Station 2 had slow response times. In fact, Long Lake Fire has had acceptable response times as, sorry, as, as primary calls from Station 2 to Navarre area. I'll read that again. In fact, Long Lake Fire has had acceptable response times as, as primary calls from Station 2 to the Navarre area and are faster than what ORNO can provide now as they respond from their old Public Works building next to ORNO City Hall. So the truth is that ORNO Fire Department response to Navarre is not faster than Long Lake Fire was. And by the way, some people at the mayor's coffee questioned the ethics of having the new ORNO fire chief do the needs assessment when his future employment depends on the outcome. They asked, why wasn't an independent assessment done by someone who was not embedded in the fire department? The mayor also talked about how the cost to ORNO from Long Lake Fire was going up and up and up every year, making it sound like operational costs were out of control. I showed a slide on this two years ago as well. It showed It shows that we tracked closely to inflation rate over the course of the contract. And I showed a chart of the last ten years where you see the CPI for Minneapolis-St. Paul area and, and what our budget increases were. And our budget increases were low single digits, if at all. There was two years where we had, uh, de- a decrease of budget. So, but the, you know, most of them were in the, in the one to two to three percent. And, uh, and it's true, in, in 2023, we had a nineteen percent increase. And that wa- and that was about a hundred thousand dollar increase to the budget. And that increase was for on-call and training pay and insurance, turnout gear, maintenance and fuel. And over half of that increase was insurance and well-deferred, deserved pay increases to the, uh, the, the on-call and training, uh, um, firefighters. Um, and by the way, this budget increase was developed under our former fire chief, who is now Orono's current fire chief. So it's interesting that they take issue with his leadership and budgeting when he's wearing a Long Lake hat, but no issue when he's wearing an Orono hat. But of that hundred thousand dollar increase, so because of eighty-five percent, of that hundred thousand dollar increase, Orono paid eighty-five thousand. Uh, but under our new chief, we came in significantly under budget that year in 2023. So we refunded Orono thirty-three thousand for 2023. So the budget increase for 2023 was then actually closer to ten percent. With that refund, Orono paid five hundred and forty-four thousand for full coverage of Orono by Long Lake Fire in 2023. Compare that to the greater than one million dollar 2025 operational budget to cover Navarre area alone, about one-third of Orono coverage area. So twice the cost to cover one-third the area, plus the millions that they are spending on redundant capital equipment. That's something that ought to bother the Orono residents. Again, I only responded to this as I feel the ongoing lies and direct tax, uh, direct attacks from the Orono mayor need to be answered. And by the way, all of the documents, presentations, emails, rulings, the presentation that I mentioned that I gave two years ago, all of that, uh, that's related to the Long Lake Fire Department can be found on our city website. Um, so that's all I had. What's also interesting?
Thank you, thank you, John, for putting that together.
Yeah, thanks. And what's interesting too is when, last year, I believe we had more calls than the prior year. Right. So Highland's first year of managing, we actually had more calls and came under budget. Yeah, weren't, weren't the calls up by a hundred or?
Yeah, I remember five hundred and some was like five thirteen or, I can't remember how many.
Yeah, but it was a significant increase in call volume. Um, we introduced duty crews, although we paid for that out of our own pocket mainly. Um, a very successful voluntary duty crew program that, that we're continuing this year. And, um, and yeah, we came in significantly under budget. That was, uh, that was a pretty big accomplishment under our new chief. So, uh, any other comments?
Just, I mean, it's just fascinating. I did watch the coffee as well and it's, it's just fascinating the, the narrative when, when you manufacture a crisis and then blame others for your decisions when in fact, the data shows that things were well managed. Um, it's very frustrating, but unfortunately, none of us are surprised that, by what's said by that individual. So, um, it's disappointing, but he is who he is.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I don't normally respond to all of the noise that's going on, uh, around us in social media and otherwise. But when it's a direct attack on the Long Lake City Council that is based on misinformation and lies, I, I, I feel like I needed to respond.
And I, I did look at the data a little bit in the past and, and I, this, this feels like I should dig back into that and, uh, and, and just get more specifics about some of those. You, you talked in generalities, but I think it'd be useful to just let people know the, the types of things that were in that assessment and then, you know, potentially get some of the current data to see what we look like.
Okay, then we'll move on to other business. Anything, Deirdre?
Nothing for me.
Um, I have one thing, and it was, we talked about a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago. It was the Hennepin County finishing on the Wayzata Boulevard project. Um, I know it was a, it was a fair amount of money and it was a, a invoice that came way, way, way late. Is it, is it possible to request them to, to, I don't know if you need more time to hash things out with them or can we request them to come and just present and help us understand what, what that is about?
Um, yeah, so as of right now, I got the invoices. I'm having our engineer firm double check all the quantities that we're getting billed for and go back on the past data. I mean, it's seven years old, so these people weren't even part of the design and engineering of it back then. So they're just trying to wrap their head around what it means. And once we get a little bit more information, I'll probably have Hennepin County come out and discuss.
Okay.
How it works.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there any, uh, new information on that invoice that we got regarding the turn back from?
That was what, that's what he's talking about, yeah.
Okay. So you're still working that out?
Yep, I'm just having, just like I said, um, going back on some of the payments we've already made. If you remember, we did move the, the trail from the south side to the north side. So there was some engineering and some stuff that we already paid for. And so I'm just making sure we got what we, we ordered essentially, so.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that additional cost, but I thought that that was already paid for.
I thought so too.
It was a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand or something like that for?
Right, and there was some double billing, engineering related to Hennepin County. So there's a bunch of it that I just kinda question in general, so. But again, invoice at seven, you know, you're billing from 2017.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, uh, anything else?
Nope.
Good. Scott, you have any?
I don't.
Um, Jeanette?
Only one. We officially have a cloud backup solution in place for the first time ever. So we are now, uh, backing up all of our data to a cloud solution, um, real time and continuously and seems to be working well. So, uh, yet another leap into the technology age for us. And it'll be very convenient if, you know, God forbid, anything happens. We can basically, you know, download the data or get a, you know, you get a drive of that sent to us to reinstall. So we're, we're just glad to have an off-site solution with more accessibility, so.
Okay, anything else? I had, uh, one item. I, um, so October 1st is, uh, a Tuesday. It's our first meeting for October. And that happens to be the, um, the forum from the League of Women Voters, uh, for the Orono council, uh, candidates and mayor candidates. Um, and that's at seven to eight-thirty and would, would we want to?
I actually already have a line item for the September 3rd agenda for a series of meeting changes.
Okay.
Um, because we'll need to also be rescheduling the first meeting in November.
Right, I saw that.
Due to the election.
Yeah.
And establishing a canvassing board meeting as well. Um, so I just figured we would deal with all of the meeting changes at that time.
Got it, okay.
And, um, we can plan ahead knowing that to keep an agenda light, which is actually, as you can see what we did this evening.
Right, yeah.
And we were planning for mayor-minor's absence and kept it light. So I feel that if we do that for that first meeting in October, um, maybe we could just change the meeting time, um, to clear the decks and allow adequate time for anyone to attend to any of the number of things that are scheduled that evening, so.
Okay.
I will have that on the September 3rd agenda.
All right. Uh, so, uh, that was all I had. So I guess we're, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I can second that.
All right, any further discussion?
This is the quickest one.
I know. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven oh eight.
I like you as the mayor.
Two, uh.
Oh, damn.
Still two hours until it's, uh, on the decision.